My camera's blurry and I can't figure out why.
Okay, you're good to go.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. It is Tuesday, July 6th, 2021, and I now call to order the workshop of the City of College Place City Council. Will the clerk please take roll call? And verify quorum.
Councilmember Bobbitt. I do not see here. Councilmember Cleveland.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Selby.
Present.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
And councilmembers Nyhagen and Sherman both requested to be excused today. We do have a quorum. We also have with us, of course, Mayor Hernandez, Finance Director Brian Carlton, Community Development Director John Rickard, HR Director Sean Doring, City Attorney Ree Colwell, and Deputy Clerk Shelley Williams. We're ready to go. Uh oh, Mayor Hernandez, you're muted.
Thank you, appreciate it. I guess today was my turn. All right, we have, we have a pretty short agenda, I think, so let's just get moving. The first item is going to be our Regional Housing Action Plan, and Mr. Rickard is going to present on that.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Hopefully that goes smoothly here. Can everybody see the highlighted Regional Housing Action Plan that I've got up in front of us?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, okay, well, I'm just gonna jump right in. So, we've been working with the city as of Walla Walla, Dayton, Waitsburg. On, we got a grant from the Department of Commerce to do a Regional Housing Action Plan. And so, we are at the final stages of that, and the draft has been released. Planning Commission, the, the Planning Commissions for the three, the four cities had held a joint meeting in early June, and there's a video of that where the FCS group that has been working with us, the consultants, did a very nice presentation, so hopefully y'all had a chance to watch that. Because I'm not gonna be able to cover everything as in-depthly as they did, in-depth as they did, but um, I'll, I'll hit through some of the highlights that I took away from it, so.
Councilmember Selby has embraced.
Yeah, John, can you just hold for a minute?
Yeah.
A second. Councilmember Selby.
Thank you. John, can you just zoom in a little bit so the type is a little bit bigger?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Much better, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, yeah, if, please, somebody interrupt me if there's somebody waving their hand because I'm not paying any attention to those cues, so. Anyhow, so, through this process, they put out, the consultants put out a couple of surveys. The first survey that went out, I think we only got five respondents back, so they, they reformatted and sent another one out, and they sent it out in, in Spanish as well, and it was electronic, and we got over 400 responses, which was a, a great return. And basically, they kind of broke it into five housing issues, so like, these are the top five that they came out with, and basically, I mean, I, one of the ones that, you know, kind of pops out to me is inadequate housing availability, which, you know, that's, I think that's the, you know, the biggest thing here, and homelessness is obviously an issue. Housing cost affordability. There, the houses that are out there are not affordable for most people. And then, from that, they broke it into the top five housing actions recommended by the survey respond, respondents, so, development partnerships, multifamily tax incentives, grants for home, first-time home buyers, housing rehab programs, and then increased residential land inventory. So that kind of ties into, like, you know, my realm with, with land use and planning and urban growth areas. So regionally, we're, we are planning to add, you know, 4,600 units, 4,700 units in the next 20-year planning window. That's the window that we plan for. That's what this Regional Housing Action Plan looked at. And then it broke it down based on different levels of different types of housing. So, that appears to be adequate for Dayton and Waitsburg. Their UGAs that have land available to accommodate the growth that their areas are likely to see.
John. Sorry, I just wanted to announce that Councilmember Bobbitt has joined us.
So, for College Place, we're not, you know, we're adding quite a few units, or we were projected to add quite a few units, but most of that is assumed, 60% of it would be through infill. So that, that was like, a huge takeaway for our community, and it's a big concern for Walla Walla, too. I didn't highlight it, but, but there, you know, at 55%, is expected to be accomplished through infill. And so, we, we just, we really need to, that's just not realistic, especially for rural communities where, you know, we don't, we're not seeing the, the demand and, you know, the, the huge increases in growth that, that can drive the redevelopment. It's much cheaper and more economical to redevelop on, to develop undeveloped lands. So, you know, for hot markets like Portland and Seattle and those other neighborhoods around those urbanized areas, then, you know, you can, you can make larger assumptions and assume that more land's going to redevelop. But it becomes more and more difficult in rural areas.
John?
Yes.
I, I just need a little clarification. What does you, what does it mean by infill?
So infill would be, we have a lot of lots that are underdeveloped, that maybe have just a single-family home on them, or maybe a duplex and they're, but maybe they have, you know, a big backyard, that's, you know, 10,000 or 20,000 square feet. And so, you're, you're looking at areas inside your existing city limits that have untapped potential. So redevelopment of those properties becomes challenging, at least in our community, because those lands are not easily accessible. They're, they're secondary lots. There may not be a lot of room in between existing homes. And it also, you know, from an, from a, from an affordability standpoint, redevelopment often takes existing housing inventory offline, because they may have to demo, demo a home that may be more affordable. And so, you're disrupting the, the housing inventory for people that, that may or may not be able to afford the new units that might come about because of this redevelopment.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm gonna skip ahead to, so regional contacts, whoops, I mentioned this briefly. So, the grant we got was from, from, from the Washington State Department of Commerce, so it's Washington state tax dollars that are funding this. And a lot of people ask, well, why didn't we look in, you know, Milton Free Water? Or why didn't we look at the Kennewak and Pasco market? Well, where, where we, when we think of ourselves as a region, we often think of, yes, Milton Free Water, but they're in Oregon, so we, we couldn't cross state lines in this research. But Dayton and Waits, well, Waitsburg's in our county, and then Dayton, we often think of ourselves as kind of a region. We, regionally, we, you know, coordinate a lot of things together. So, we asked, Dayton was a part of the application process as well, and so that's why they're included. And, and when people can't afford housing where their jobs are, they often start to look out away from, you know, where they're, where they would like to live. And so Dayton does fall into that category. Jumping into recent accomplishments. So we all have relatively new conference of plans that were updated in 2018, 2019. Community Council, we were, all, all the cities at some level or another were, were a part of the Community Council's Regional Policy Study on Affordable Housing. The Affordable Housing Study Work Group that created that great report that we've reached back to as a resource. City of Walla Walla, they've, they, and their code changes, they, similarly to what College Place did, consolidated, they had three residential zones, they consolidated down into one. And they actually allow up to four dwelling units on, in the single-family zone, so a fourplex in the single-family zone. They made some changes to, they don't, they allow private rows to access up to nine, nine dwelling units. And some other changes here and there. They, they also have a utility rate discount, providing water and sewer utility rate discounts to low-income citizens. And then, they have, well, we, we have CDB, CDBG money as well, but they, they, they get every, we have to apply for funds through the grant process, where Walla Walla actually gets, every year, they just get a chunk of money to spend on affordable housing. So they've, they have, I think they, they've expanded this program, but they have a, a mini grant application process where residents of low income can apply for home repair projects. Maybe they need a water heater, or the roof needs to be repaired, but they partner with Blue Mountain Action Council on that. College Place, we consolidated our two residential zones down into one, SFR, and we allow up to, to a duplex to be built in our single-family zone. So that's something we're watching staff-wise, and I'm talking to Planning Commission about this periodically, as we're watching to see what happens in Walla Walla, where they've allowed up to four units, to see if that might be something that we want to do. But we want to, we want to see how that plays out. And then we increased, we, our short plot standards. We used to be, a short plot was up to four lots, now it's up to nine. We've got cottage housing, and we allow in both zones, in our multifamily and our single-family zones, we allow mixed-use developments in, on College Avenue and in our general commercial zones. Zero-outline townhouses, tiny homes in certain areas, like in manufactured homes and divisions. And I think the big one that's been, that I'm seeing as an incentive to get accessory dwelling units is Council last, last year passed a reduced capital facility charge from our water and sewer for, for dwelling units that are 600 square feet or less. So, and that applies across the board to apartments, so studios. If somebody's got a, you know, an assortment of unit sizes, it'll, they'll, they are allowed to, you know, if they have a studio that's, or just in one bedroom that's under 600 square feet, they get that reduced capital facility charge. Let's see. Public inputs, I mentioned, you know, they, the surveys, they had 419 respondents. We only received three back, and that were Spanish responses, but it was out there, and I, I kind of went over these to kind of the, what they pulled out of it on the highlights, and I'm not gonna go through the stuff right here. It's, if you want to look at the questions, there are an addendum on that at the end of the report. But we, we have gone through that public outreach process. We still need to advertise and hold a public hearing at our Planning Commission, and then take public comment through that process, and then we will bring it, bring it to the Council for final adoption. So, that's why we're introducing this to you at a, at a workshop, just so we can go a little bit deeper into it. Housing market overview. Basically, our, our average growth rate is exceeding, you know, what we can supply in housing. We're not growing a lot, but we are growing. So, you know, College Place actually is growing faster than the rest of the county, but again, it's not by a lot. I mean, it's not even a full percentage point. The state average is 1.33, so. But we are, you know, the urbanized areas are, you know, the total for the urbanized areas is 0.68% of the growth and of the, and for the county, you know, it's only at 20.22%. So, clearly, the urbanized areas is where the housing is needed. And that's where, you know, we have the services, and that's where you should account for it and provide, you know, necessary tools to allow for growth. Housing income, household income. We are well below the state average. While countywide, we're at 56,000 versus 70,000 for the state average for incomes. And then when you look at median incomes in Walla Walla or in College Place, it's, you know, it's, it's even worse. So those numbers aren't great. That gets into the cost-burdened households. So, according to HUD, households are considered cost-burdened if they pay over 30% of their gross income on house, housing and utilities. They're considered severely cost-burdened if they pay over 50% of their gross income on housing and utilities. So, well, we'll jump down and just look at the table. So, remember I said, if they're paying 50% of their gross income, then it's severely cost-burdened. Well, here's the table from the severely cost-burdened, 20, almost 21% of our residents are severely cost-burdened. That's, and, that's not good. The state, I, we're, so we're higher than the state average, which is really bad. And it's, and it's bad, even in Waitsburg, it's bad. Which, you know, you would think a rural area like that, that you, housing affordability would be much more attainable. And there's another tool for measuring economic hardship. It's called Alice, and United Way came up with it a few years ago. And it, it goes beyond just the housing cost and your utilities. It factors in basically what they call the essentials, housing, childcare, food, transportation, technology, healthcare, taxes, and then there's a contingency as well. So when you look at the Alice, the state average is 33%, where in housing in Walla Walla County is at 42%. And then it's, it's even worse in the Dayton area, but when you just look at the numbers, so Dayton is 44, and then when you look at College Place's numbers, we're at 50%. So, so Dayton's, you know, actually better than us. Countywide, we're at 42%. So, it's not good numbers. We're gonna jump, we're gonna skip the jobs, because that, that, some of the stuff I presented to you guys, when I went over the housing needs assessment, and a lot of the stuff that I'm gonna skip through was already covered in that, in that presentation. So I'm gonna skip through it for the sake of saving time. And I'm going to go to 26, yeah. So, a lot of my takeaway from this is we don't have the land capacity to build more housing. So even, even if, you know, I don't have a lot of control over the type of housing we build, we don't have a lot of the incentive programs that are out there. We can't offer tax breaks. You know, we can consider certain things like incentivizing, reducing capital facility charges, or reducing, let's say we, on multifamily, let's say we get rid of the parking requirements to try to incentivize. But none of those tools that we have right now will, are guaranteed that it'll be, you know, affordable. Even, you know, the, the land, let's take the McHernan-Christiansen property across from the high school. That land, you know, I, it's free market, right? It's 200 acres, it's got its challenges, it's gonna have its expenses. You know, there's gonna be a, a lift station assessment to help us cover our expenses. So there's no guarantee that that's gonna be affordable housing, but it does, no matter what, it's more housing out there on the market, which frees up the demand for some of our housing that we're seeing price increases that are just, you know, we look at it and we go, I can't believe that house is, they're asking $260,000 for that house, when three years ago, maybe they would have been able to get 150,000. Now, a lot of that's anecdotal, you know, we all like to get on Zillow and, you know, and then, so anyhow, but what I'm trying to say is, is that, for, for me as a planner, it comes back to just simple, simply having enough dirt for new development to come in and alleviate our existing housing inventory. So, we can't rely on 60% of our growth over the next year, next 20 years to, to be infill. We need to expand our urban growth boundaries. And the cornerstone to that, and, and I'm, and I'm sad to say at this point, this plant, this report does not address this or even mention it, is that the, the, the 1993 countywide planning policies need to be updated. And that, that should be mentioned in this report, and I, when we met back in June with the joint group, I expressed that concern, and I, I've been saying that as a member of the PAC. Like, I, and so, hopefully in the final version, they, they did say at the meeting that they thought that they would be able to, to include that, you know, that the jurisdictions need to work together and get, get the county to update those outdated countywide planning policies, because, so that you understand, and when you talk to the county commissioners, those countywide planning policies are how we all agree to do the math. That's how, at that point, we, we will agree how much growth is gonna be allocated to the urbanized areas. Is it, is it 15%? Because we're 15% of the population, therefore we get 15% of the growth? I disagree with that. But that's what the policies say right now. I think we should be getting more like 30% of the growth, and we'll plan for that. And, and, so anyhow, there's my soapbox, but, so there, here's the land capacity analysis, and you can look at that. We just simply don't have, we don't have enough land that's not, you know, that's not, that wouldn't need to be, go through the redevelopment process available to accommodate our growth over the next 20 years. And then I'm gonna get into the action section, which starts on 29. So, some of this we've kind of done, but they're talk, there's, they mentioned the cluster zoning. I'm not exactly sure how that would work in an urbanized area. Like, the clustering was a, was a tool that was used in the county on ag land, where they would take, like, let's say you took 100 acres, and then you were able to get 10 one-acre lots that were all clustered together, and then the rest of it remained in ag. Accessory dwelling units, you know, there are things that we can do, like removing the parking requirements. We require one per accessory dwelling unit right now. We don't require an occupancy, there's no occupancy requirement for the main unit, so that doesn't apply to us. But really, you know, adding more housing units to the middle, the missing middle housing, which is basically your, your townhomes, your apartment complexes, things like that. Development incentive programs. So that could be, you could, you know, hopefully at some point, we'll be able to participate in a, in a tax, 12-year tax abatement. There, there are just, there are, there are other things out there that, impact fee reduction, land use write-down, which I'm not even sure what that means, but I guess it would be, I'm not sure. Parking reductions. Multifamily tax exemptions are only offered right now for cities that are over 15,000. We've been lobbying to get that changed, and we got close, I think, last cycle. And I think we'll continue to lobby for that, so that we, we have that tool. And that, these are the sort of tools that guarantee, you know, at least for a certain period, that there will be low-income units created, and they'll be, you know, market rate and available for a certain time period. So that kind of covers, oh, the last one is created in a regional affordable housing land trust. And, and we're, Mike's on the, on that committee. It's, I think they are pretty close, if not have already filed their incorporation papers, and maybe, Norma, maybe you know more on that than I do. I can't remember where he's at with that, where that group is, but.
They have filed them. They're just waiting for the, for the approval to come back.
So that, that's all I have, and it looks like I'm at a half an hour, and I, I was told that I should stop at a half an hour and take questions.
Thank you, John. That was, it's so very interesting. No matter how many times I hear things, it just, every time I hear something, I hear it differently, so, or it's something more pops up in my head. So let's go to council.
My apologies, if it wasn't as in-depth as you'd hope. I'm not an expert at affordable housing and this whole issue. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm along for the ride. That's why, you know, we brought in consultants to help us.
No, it was quite helpful. It was great. Truly, thank you. I'm gonna go through council members for any questions or comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Bobbitt.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Cleveland.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I remember some council meeting, might even been two years ago now, but it was mentioned that in terms of income to affordability, that we were the worst county in Washington. We had the least affordable housing based on what people's income was. I was curious if you had any idea if that had changed, or if that's still the case.
You know, they didn't specifically, I don't remember seeing it in the report, where they specifically compared our affordability to the state. You know, they didn't specifically, I don't remember seeing it in the report where they specifically compared our affordability to the state. Yeah, so I don't have an answer for that.
Okay, uh, the other question was, and maybe this isn't the right time or place for this, but I was curious. If we just had had any developments along the lines of getting our urban growth area expanded at all?
Well, the next, uh, update is in twenty-twenty-six. And the county's been pretty rigid on opening up, um. The urban growth boundary application process in between those mandated amendment cycles. So, but what we are trying to do in that, in this window. Is to get those countywide planning policies updated so that when we do get to twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. When we're doing the analysis, we're, we're doing our buildable lands analysis that we, we're figuring out how to allocate the, you know. OFM is giving us numbers for our growth and then that's dispersed and we have to figure out a growth rate and all that kind of stuff. Um, and all of that needs to happen before we go and start, you know, figuring out how much land. That's the big process that needs to happen before that. And so, in short, we haven't gotten anywhere. Um, you know, Mike's having offline conversations with the county commissioners and they're saying, oh yeah, talk to Lauren. And, uh, they're, the county planner, planning director, and I've been, I send emails and. No commitment so far.
Well, we'll have to wish ourselves luck then, and, uh, thanks for everyone working behind the scenes to make things happen.
Yeah.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, those are some sobering stats there, you know, I was trying to go through my mind and justify averages versus median and all that between us. But, you know, it's, um, that probably only works when you're comparing College Place to, um. Seattle or something like that, I'm guessing, but, um, yeah, um. You know, John, back to your, it's land availability, I was thinking, I was talking to someone over there in the Tri-Cities where, um. They're a broad more up there, basically the size of College Place, they're building up there as far as, uh, very seriously. You know, the housing and, uh, they're, they're, you know, um. But then it goes back to even if what you're building is gonna be affordable, you know, I mean, uh, for the, for the segment that needs it. So, yeah, these are some tough, tough questions, um. And we're, obviously, I'm sitting the obvious here, of, of course, but it's one of these things where we're in this wide. Hot housing market nationwide, and so that's driving up rental prices, that's driving up housing and, um. Yeah, I don't know, this is, um. People building a few houses in their backyards isn't gonna answer this on I, yeah, but, but thank you for the information, that's good to know, um. You know, the good and the bad and the ugly there, I guess, so, thanks, John.
Councilmember Selby.
I have a couple of questions, um, I think this is, I, I think it's great that we're moving ahead on this, um. But, one of the things that I think is happening right now is that COVID is making things much, much worse. And we're going to have to figure out sort of how to climb out of that. Um, cause for example, I don't know that I am, uh, representative. But I took a ten percent pay cut. My rent is going up by fourteen percent and if I went month to month, it would be going up over forty percent. Um, so it's just, you know, unbelievable what people are being asked to do. Because the income is less, the rent is more. So people who were in the, you know, I can afford to live here. Can without doing anything move up into I can't afford to live anymore. Um, so I think this is a great long-term plan, but I think we're gonna need a shorter-term plan that says. How do we help people climb out of COVID? And then I had, um, basically the same question that, that Mac did about the county. And I guess my biggest question is, what is the reasoning that they give for not giving us more? Is it just that ratio?
Well, yeah, back when. We did our buildable lands analysis. We, Greg Dorn and the city, when we did our, our analysis, we. We were, we were taking things out of the analysis, uh, be, because of on-the-boots, on-the-ground knowledge. So we, we subtracted out a lot of these infill developments, just say, you know, like, we, we knew that it's not, it's just not gonna happen. So we, we didn't factor in much info. Um, and so, yeah, it, and then the county, when they did their analysis, they. They did their own analysis, which I disagree with. I think they should rely more upon the local jurisdiction's knowledge, let them do their own analysis. And, and then figure out whether or not we need to allocate land or not. But they did their own analysis, they had a consultant from the west side. And they, that consultant seemed to think that all of this infill, there was this huge potential in infill and redevelopment. And again, you know, the numbers, it goes back to, well, which, how big of a lot? How small of a lot do you can, do you factor in, uh, to that redevelopment potential? Is it, do you, do you just throw out any lot that is, uh, you know, a half acre in size? Is it an acre in size, you know, where, where's the threshold, um, for the equation? Um, and then, uh, they, you know, there's just other, other things, um, like I, like I mentioned earlier. Agreeing on how much growth you're gonna allocate to College Place. I mean, if you, if you look at the, I won't be able to find it in here, but, um. You know, it, it, they, they're allocated, they're, they're allocating growth based on our current percentage of the county's population. So Walla Walla's thirty percent, let's just say, of the growth, so they, of the county's population. So they get thirty percent of the growth, so they're allocating more growth to, to Walla Walla. Where we have, we have capacity, you know, we've got a storm, we've got a wastewater treatment plant. We've got wells, we've got water rights. Um, gi, give me more of the growth, we can handle more of the growth. Um, and whether or not that's pulling away from, I don't think we should be pulling away from Walla Walla. The, what I don't think we should be doing is allocating growth to the county, because that's counterintuitive to the Growth Management Act. You, you don't need to, you don't need to allocate the unincorporated areas' growth. Because you're, you're simple, having zoning and minimum and maximum lot sizes already does that for you. So, sure, maybe they, may, let's, let's give them ten percent of the growth and then give the urbanized areas, College Place and Walla Walla, the rest of it. The other smaller communities are, they're gonna still thrive, they've got plenty of land and, and it'll be fine, but, um. So I'm kind of rambling, it's not, it's, uh. It's frustrating, but, but this, the, that, the countywide planning policies have to be updated before we go into the next process. Cause that, we all need to be doing the same math. And I guess that's where I'm coming back, is that. Greg Dorn and Associates was doing math, you know, one way. And the county was doing it another way and Walla Walla was even doing it a different way. So, you know, you compare these, um, these analysis and they're not all, they're not apples and, and apples.
Right.
Oh.
So do you think there's a way that, um, all three would get together and hire a single consultant to do it for the entire? Group?
Um, I, that's what I wanna do is I want, I would like to see, um. Us, the jurisdictions, hire a consultant to help us update the countywide planning policies. And, and, you know, we would have, have skin in the game because we're paying the bill too. Um, and have some say, not just, you know, comment, you know. Filling out a public comment form, but actually being on a, you know, a technical advisory committee. And, and sitting down in a room with the other planners and looking at what other jurisdictions are doing. How other counties divvy up the population, um, you know, what. You know, how small of a parcel do you factor in for redevelopment potential, uh, things like that?
Um, we had a joint meeting with the Walla Walla City Council, I recall. Um, I don't recall having one with the county, um, but it seems like it might be. There's a number of issues that we overlap with on the county and it might be useful to have a joint city council, county commissioner meetings. They would do that so that, um, they can start to get to know us, we can be know them, um, et cetera. So, just a suggestion, and I've more than used up my time, so, thank you.
We're gonna, uh, council, let's see, where are we? I, I got lost where we at, okay, Boyle, right? Councilmember Boyle, any questions?
Not so much a question, but if anybody, he touched on the Alice study that, um, United Way does. And as, as one of the directors of our local United Way, if you guys have questions about that study, it, they redo it, I think, every two years. And it's really, really deep information that talks about, um, the actual families in an area and working families that are, you know. Barely making ends meet and what that actually looks like, rather than state and national, you know, statistic information. So if you guys have questions about those, I'm happy to get those reports for you or any of those things that you might need. So that was it, other than that, no questions, it's a huge bite to take off and, and I'm glad that this is being looked at.
I would love to see those, Councilmember Boyle. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, John, I know this is always a difficult conversation, uh, discussion for you, but thank you so much for your continued work on it.
Yeah, thank you, happy to bring it to you.
Okay, so next is the government finance of municipal building one-on-one and Mr. Carlton will present on that.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, I'll share my screen and bring up my presentation. All right, Mike asked me to, uh, put together a little presentation on accounting, finance and budget for the city. You won't have to study too hard, but there will be a thirty-minute quiz at the end of this, so, uh, just so you're prepared. Uh, I'm kidding, hopefully we'll give you some insights and, um. Provide some more information about, uh, how we deal with accounting for the, for the city government. Uh, kind of the topics I'm gonna touch on are basically about GAAP principles, the basis of accounting that we use. Fund accounting, how we keep track of our finances and the budgeting process. Um, really the key differences between governments and for-profit businesses, uh, let's be honest, it's the profit motive. We're required by the, uh, state of Washington to have a balanced budget. Um, therefore we can't run in a deficit and we don't make a profit. So basically we spend based on our resources. Um, and you know, the governments, we basically provide services, some of our fee services, like our utilities. But then we have our not fee services like fire, police and, you know, the administrative part of the government. So when we have financial statements for the government, our typical users are the taxpayers, citizens, creditors. Legislative bodies, granters, management and rating agencies such as Moody's, uh, and Fitch and S and P five hundred. Which we were ra, S and P five hundred rated us last year as a triple A. So our rating as far as their, uh, calculations were in good shape. Um, basically all accounting, uh, follows gen, generally accepting count, accounting principles, which most of you have heard of as GAAP. It's the common standard and procedure set by policy boards you to record accounting information and compile financial statements. Um, although we do, as far as the cities in Washington State, we do have what's called a departure from GAAP. In that cash basis accounting is not considered part of GAAP, uh, generally accepted accounting principles. So we are the only state within the United States that allows for a cash basis accounting. I'll get in a little bit more detail in, in a future slide. Uh, there's the different, I've kind of brought up the different types of account, basis of accounting. We have our cash basis, which is what we follow in the city. And it basically is we record our revenue and cash is received and we record our expenditures when we pay it out. Um, as it says there, it's easy to understand, but then again, as I mentioned, it's not compliant with GAAP. Um, there's also an accrual method, which means you recognize stuffs when the commitment's made and not when the cash is incurred. So then you have liabilities, you have receivables, you basically have a balance sheet. And fundamentally, that's the big difference between a cash and accrual, is that accrual statements have a balance sheet. They show your assets as far as your cash goes, they show your liabilities, your payments that you're committed to. It also shows your, uh, physical assets at historical cost. So it's, um, most of the country, uh, operates on an accrual basis. Our issue from, uh, reporting as a cash is some of our, our federal government, uh. Projects that we, uh, get funding on require us to have a balance sheet, which we don't report. As such to have a balance sheet, so it becomes an issue, so we try and throw something together to kind of simulate a balance sheet. But we really don't record our transactions that way. There's also a couple of other methods that aren't common, are modified accrual and a budgetary. And it's just a little, uh, note down there at the bottom that, uh, that the state allows GAAP or cash basis. Um, but most of the cities within the state use a cash basis. It's simple and it's easy for non-accountants to understand, you know. If I'm going too fast, let me know, or if you have questions, please raise a hand. Um, here's some issues or some items on cash basis reporting. Uh, the financial statements are simple and easy to understand. They're basically your cash in is your revenues and your cash out is your expenditures. Um, it's easy to do cash flow, cause you basically look at your, your bank balance and that's the cash you have on hand. Um, and the financial reporting aligns with the budget. Less training for staff is true, cause they don't have to have an understanding of the flow between a balance sheet and the income statement. Some of the disadvantages are, it really has a focus on short-term rather than long-term financial position you'll get. With accrual base, which identifies what amounts you owe currently and over a longer period of time. Um, there's less information on non-cash items like assets, um, and other sort of changes in infrastructure assets. There's very little information provided on liabilities and the change in those liabilities. So that being the debt you owe, the money you owe to, um, you know, state entities, to other cities, so on. And, uh, some of that, uh, cash basis may not be familiar to external users that are expecting to see accrual-based. I won't get into this, I won't read out every line item, but basically we're required by the state of Washington to follow the BARS. Account coding, which is the budgeting, accounting and reporting system. The state identifies how you code transactions and what the coding of those transaction is. So basically. Of those transaction is, so basically it's um. It's a seven-digit code that they pre-describe that you must follow and. It's really extended for users, other users besides us, and that it allows them to combine information from multiple entities. And to report in a consistent manner. So people that prescribe to the bars, they have to report according to the bars. And it allows them to accumulate information and report. Really, when we get into how we bid the huge difference between profit companies and not. And for-profit companies is that they use fund accounting. And basically, fund accounting is. A method in which we account for funds or different levels of types of transactions in single self-balancing accounts. Which has allows us to keep track of those revenues and expenditures according to a different classification. Those those entities or funds can be classified according to legal requirements, management judgment. The city college place uses 33 different funds. And it seems like a lot, and I won't read every line item in there. But it's basically broken down into different components, and I'll get into that in just a moment. I'll just go on to the next page. So basically, there's three types of funds in government accounting. There are governmental funds. Which is the default fund, which we track all of our government. Government except for those requiring a different fund. That sounds counterintuitive, but basically, it's our general fund, our 001 fund. Which includes police, fire, uh, the operation of the of the government. It's our largest dollar value fund. And it probably has the most transactions through it. Within the governmental funds, you can have capital projects, funds, debt service, our general fund, which I just spoke of. There's also permanent funds and special revenue funds. There's also a second category, which are proprietary funds. Those are basically simulate a profit type. Non-government entity in which they have specified revenues in which they charge out and then specified expenditures. As it says there, the enterprise. Funds, these are used to account for any activity for which external users are charged a fee for good and services. Even when the government subsidize a portion of the activity. There's also in proprietary funds, which are considered internal service funds. That's so within the government, you would have. For example, our equipment allocation is our equipment costs are tracked in a separate fund. And then they're allocated out to the funds within the city based on some criteria. And either, you know, it's hours of use by by department or. Repair costs or employee hours are used to allocate those. Internal service funds. So when you think about proprietary funds, basically, you're talking about our utilities. So our water, sewer and stormwater are proprietary funds. They have their own. Charges which they charge out to the customers and then they have their own set of expenditures. And we also cannot transfer money from a governmental fund to a proprietary fund without approval of council. Or it's approved within the budgetary process that we have to transfer funds to maintain the liquidity in that in that fund. The third type of funds within a government are fiduciary funds. That is where we accumulate funds on behalf of somebody else and pay them out for the benefit of that fund. We have like the big one that we have is our pension and employee benefit trust fund. We cannot touch the funds in that account. Those are unique to that fund. It could only be used for that purpose. There's a couple others listed there which we are not associated with, but I just put them there for reference. Am I going too fast or is there any questions? All right. So here I've listed our funds and you can, and you'll see on the reports that we give out on the monthly financial reports. You'll get a summary page of all the list of these accounts and their associated balances. It's a lot of numbers to consume, but I thought this might help a little bit to identify how they relate into what we just talked about. So I won't go through every single one, but. The first sec is like our governmental funds and our big one is the current expense fund. Again, that. Has all of the operations of the government of the city plus. Fire and police are in there. Community development's another one, the the canon departments in there, administration, the clerks functions, all those functions are included in that current expense. And really, the revenue that's generated for that fund is from. Some some portion of the property tax, sales tax, fuel tax. And that's about a large portion of the amount of money that funds that. We also have a series of special revenue accounts and those are determined by state RCW that we're required. To allocate a certain funds that we receive from the state towards those special revenue and those. Expenditures have to be limited to a type that's allowed within that group. So we have the street fund. Which is our, is not considered a utility, which you may think it would be, but to fund our street repairs and stuff, it's a separate fund that goes, is funded by. Current expense currently and it's considered a special revenue fund. We also have criminal justice, which. Has revenues from the state that must be allocated to Chris criminal justice type expenditures. Also forfeited proceeds and hotel motel tax. So those are all.
Peterson has a question.
So Brian, I'm looking through the funds and, um, no, this is very good. Thank you. Um, you know, I think as council members, we look at this. And there is the the cash that comes in under the current expense fund. So that covers a lot of the employee expense, and so that's what you mentioned, sales tax, property tax. But there's very little, let's talk about my water bill, very little of that goes to. The pain of salaries or wages, that's mainly to capital or.
That that'll go down proprietary funds from the 400 series. Those revenues received go into that group of funds, which are directly associated to. You know, the your bill is split between consumption of water and there's a debt charge. And those are all related to that 400 series accounts. None of that money flows into the general government.
So what's interesting about this, you know, we we've, we get the funds that flow in from the state support some activities, some personnel activities?
Well, they don't, they don't come in specifically identified that way. They just come in and they're coded. They're part of the current expense fund.
Yeah, right, but I mean.
That's it used up however we budget the money. You guys approve the budget every year. So according to that budget determines how we allocate the revenue and how we allocate the expenditures.
And Brian, you probably have showed this, and if you don't have it here today, that's fine. I think what's interesting is how much, so. Without funding to redo the streets, a lot of the capital activities. That stuff sort of could wait. We don't need, we don't want it to wait, but it could, you know, for a year, two years. But the ongoing. Activities of the city government as far as salaries, funding of retirement benefits, you know, all the activities with the individuals. Is there any, what's the split on that between what is our outside sources of cash that come in? Just a rough estimate versus what we're getting from sales tax. Use fees and things like that.
It's a good, I don't have that stat on the top.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, yeah, here I am, but.
Get an update you guys on that.
Yeah, because I think that's interesting. We look, we look at this and we think. From a cash perspective, of course, it's like we're we're understanding. We we borrow money. We get money from the federal government, we get money from the state, we're getting a sales tax. I think it always goes down to what? The day-to-day operations of city government, what funds that, you know, that that's the type of thing as far as what what what's the percentage breakout and then, anyway. I'm repeating myself now, but that would be interesting to know at some point. Yeah.
No, it's a good, very good question, and I'll get you the answer for that.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Brian.
Now, we also have some some debt service funds that aren't aren't related to a utility. Those are broken out. You'll see within the proprietary funds in that 400 series, we not only have. Debt, but we also have capital funding and debt funding plus the operation of the utility. That group of 300 is a unique set of capital funds. That money is allocated and must be used for a certain purpose. So we have our REIT funds, which we're which we're familiar with, which are a state-funded real estate excise tax. If you're not familiar with the acronym. And we use that to fund a number of projects and we have been accumulating money in the last three years to help fund the. Lions Park renovation, that some of that money is going to come from our REIT. We have some CDBG project funds, some of the. Departments within the government require us to keep track of. Our expenditures in a unique fund and that requires us to set up a new one and CDBG is one of them. We also have our street improvement fund. Facilities maintenance reserve, which is all of the funds that we use to repair the the. General buildings and facilities of the city. We have an equipment reserve fund, which we purchase our equipment out of. There's an economic development fund and an economic reserve fund. Then we get into our 400 series accounts, which are proprietary funds. So that means the money that comes into that fund has to be kept within that fund. So the water fund at 400, um, it'll have, it has a capital account, it has, actually has a couple capital accounts. And a debt bond service fund, so we can keep track of those different expenditures separately. And then there's the wastewater and stormwater group of funds. Finally, we have our internal service fund, which is our equipment repent rental and replacement, which is basically our shop. Which allocates all those costs out on a. An approved allocation method, which we brought to council, I believe it was a few months ago. And finally, we have our one fiduciary fund, which is our flexible benefits plan fund. So I know that's a lot to take in. And there seems like there is a lot of funds. But it seems. Kind of standard for cities of our size having this quantity of funds. We have to be very careful in these funds in that we can't transfer money between the government, any of the. The the that top group of four, the governmental special revenue debt service capital, we cannot transfer money into those proprietary funds. Without some, without council approval. Council approval being it was approved in the budget or it has to be loaned. So you have to have an internal loan between those entities. They have to operate kind of as a standalone. I won't read this verbatim, but we do have within the government, we have a requirement that we have a certain amount of money left over at the end of each. Each fund, not every fund, but as a group of funds or an individual fund, we have a reserve or contingency. So you can see based on it has the first one is unreserved fund balance. That is our current expense, which we're required to have a 17%. Of our bed budgeted revenues as a fund balance, which we have maintained. I mean, we've never been below that amount. Our debt service funds, which if. I can't remember how to go back. Our debt service funds, there's, it's sort of deceiving. I have debt service at 200 series. But if you look down in the proprietary, there's also debt service amounts in there that relate to the utility. We're required to have at least one year average of annual debt service payment at the end of the year and that in those balances. We have some targets on our facilities, capital reserves, that's the two REIT. And plus the maintenance reserve accounts in that 300 series, our target is to have a $300,000 balance in those accounts. And then a couple of years ago, we set up a rainy day fund account where we're trying to accumulate money for. You know, potential bad times and. The the goal there is 10% of our current expense fund and we're starting to accumulate that, but we're not at that target at this point. The big thing within the city governments is our is our budget. At the basic level, it's a legal document that gives local government officials the authority to incur obligations and pay expenses. It's the big process we go through, starting, actually, it's starting in August and we'll run through the beginning in December. You'll be involved, of course, most of you know, you'll be involved with multiple meetings where we go through budget. And that's involved at both the capital level, which Mike prepares and the the city budget, which I prepare. The budget basically allocates resources among departments. Reflect reflects our priorities and policies and controls how much each department may spend. In most jurisdictions, the budget is evolved into more than just financial. It includes mission statements, goals, objectives. That convey how budget decisions relate to a wider vision for the future of the municipality. The budget is also an evaluation tool comparing commitments made in previous year's budget and actual accomplishments. And each month we provide our our reporting and it presents to you where we are at in relation to budget. Yes, we have a budget and it plays an important role, all sizes and forms. Now appropriated budget, we're required by the state of Washington by RCW that we have an appropriated budget. And that is the budget has to be adopted by city ordinance. And that means you guys approve the budget each year. It affects planning, directing and controlling. And definitely sets us on what we can spend and how we spend it. It not only flows through the budgets that you see, but those budgets also go to each department level. Which that allows them to control their expenditures, so they can stay on budget. And they're also given monthly reports by department level, which show where they are at on their budgetary expending. This is a little bit of the budget process. I won't go into each line item in detail, but basically from March to Au- August, we start to prepare our budget items. There is a council retreat, which I have yet to be involved with, but. It was just an item I threw in there. We have public hearings, definitely on the capital facility updates. We do the yearly survey, which we ask for our citizens' input into what their priorities are, that we can incorporate into our budget process. And then the mayor and administrator, they can communicate the overall objectives to staff and we establish the budget. In early September, the request for all department heads to prepare their yearly requests. From the second half of September, we review those and prepare an estimate for debt service and other estimates. And. Near the end of September. We include. Implicit price deflectors are calculated to show where we were at as far as what we're anticipating the revenues going up. And we'll finalize our budget estimates and file with clerk. Beginning of October, we finalize our estimates and we have meetings with the managers and go over each of their. have meetings with the managers and go over each of their um requests for budget. Uh, moving on through October is a number of meetings, which we have and go over the details. We also have a hearing on our property tax increase, which must be submitted to the county. Um, beginning in November, the mayor and it should be administrator there, sorry, prepares preliminary budget and budget message. Um, through November, we have a number of different public hearings on the the budget and update the budget as more detailed information becomes available. Um, near the end of November, we provide that information to the public. Uh, in November, we set our property tax levies by ordinance is filed with the county. And then early in December, we have our final budget hearing and final budget presentation for council's approval. And then we use that document to uh set our expenditures and revenue predictions for the next year. Last, what we talk about is financial transparency, a very important part of the accounting. You know, we provide our monthly financial reporting on a and we compare actuals to budget. We have detailed financial policies that we update. Um. That was just finalized uh last year with some updates occurring, you know, on a yearly basis. Um. We prepare comprehensive financial reports that are given to the state auditor's office. Um, we adopt the annual budget that's also recorded with the state. Um. And then we provide debt information on our commitments as required. And all that information is available on the city website. So we're really trying to show that the hard, the money that's being brought in is expended according to the rules and according to the budget and within our general accepted accounting principles. That's what I have. John, did I make it under half hour?
All right. Now that I know that you all took notes.
Oh, man.
This.
It's only thirty questions. It won't take. And it's multiple choice.
All right, let's go to council members. Uh, council member Bobbit.
Well, Brian, as long as it's open PowerPoint, I think I'll do okay. I appreciate all the information. I think that's one of the best um presentations I've seen to kind of give us a good overview. Thank you so much. No questions.
Council member uh Cleveland.
Uh, no questions, but great presentation. Appreciate the education and uh look forward to kind of more education that we can get to just better understand all the inner workings of everything. So again, thank you for that.
Sure.
Council member Peterson.
You know, that's really good. Thank you. You know, um, it's briefly. Um. We talk about cash basis versus accrual and it's um it it's interesting. We always have those questions at the end of the year. Hope there aren't um bills to be paid that are in a drawer waiting for the next month. In other words, there's always that process that we go through as a city. And anybody that's on a cash basis, we do want to make sure that we've captured those expenses and recorded those as best we can, which kind of turns into a hybrid accrual uh potential cash basis. So um that's where people look at what do I have in my checking account? That's how that's how wealthy I am, right? But I haven't made my house payment and I haven't made my car payment yet, you know, and so there's that. There's that ying and yang there. Um, the other thing that's interesting is funded accounting is um I've worked i- in my finance background in a in a non-funded accounting. W- with cities and with colleges and whatnot, you kind of know what your income stream is going to be month to month, more or less. And it's interesting as we have these conversations, when you work in a for-profit area uh potentially where you don't know what next month is. And you don't even know what the valuation of what next month's receipts are going to be until the month's over. And so it's always this um we all bring our strengths to this discussion and our experiences and it's and it's always um nice to bounces uh off of the different systems to see um how valid are, you know, our 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 uh guesses are or or our budgeting and how how that turns out. So very good. Anyway, I I'm going on too much here, but thank thanks, Brian.
Yeah, and Lauren, what the state does at the end of the year, they give you, what they do is they allow the cities to stay open for a period of twenty days after the end of the year to recognize expenditures that would come in um that relate to the prior year.
Yeah.
So when we report our financials at the end of the year, basically, there isn't any accounts payable. It's all accounted for in that twenty days. So indirectly, we're we're accounting for it. But to me, the big disadvantage of um cash bases is we don't show our future commitments. We don't show that we have five million dollars in loans payable over the next year. Or we don't show our asset base, like how much assets do we have and have they? Are they depreciated and what's the value of them? To me, that's the big disadvantage of um of having a cash basis.
Yeah, very good. Hey, thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Council member Selby.
No questions. Thank you. I thought that was excellent and I appreciate we we will still be able to go back and access it in the uh earlier board docs, right? When we, if we have questions later.
Council member Boyle.
No questions, but great job, Brian.
Brian, I think it's really helpful for us to um and and the public to understand the how budgets are appropriated and what money can be used for what expenses. Um, I think it's often thought that we just have one pot of money and we can just pull out of there whatever and pay for whatever and do whatever with it. So um, thank you for that. That breakdown said it really helps us understand how how we pay for things.
Great. You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions before we let him go? All right. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are now um to closing items. Is there any other business for good of the order?
Just a question.
Did you want me to do the um yard of the month?
If you have that information, then yes, um Chief Tamaris was unable to make it.
Yep. He he asked me to cover it for him, so I can.
Oh, did he? Okay, I skipped over it cuz I didn't see him. All right. Please do the yard of the month. I would love to see it. Thank you.
Okay, so our yard of the month for June um is Jim and Monica Gaffrey. They've lived in College Place for forty years. Uh, they are at thirteen eighty-nine Independence Drive, and here is a picture of them with their yard of the month sign. So um.
That's nice.
Be sure and and drive by and take a look. It looks like they were festive for the holiday and everything.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you. It's great to always have good neighbors. All right. Now is there? Uh, I think somebody was gonna say something as well.
Council Jerry.
Oh. Yes, sir.
With all the summer heat and stuff and our Freedom Festival being canceled and the fireworks shows. Um. How are we doing with that?
In in to renew it or I mean to reschedule it?
Be saving the fireworks for New Year's or something?
Oh, yeah, we're um Lisa, do you want to talk about it or do you want me to go ahead and?
Um. Either way, it's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Decided not to reschedule Freedom Festival. Um. Lining up all of the different logistics of everybody that would need to be able to be there. Um, we just couldn't coordinate schedules uh for for being able to present the same event um at a later time in the summer. So uh, we've decided to um try and figure out something extra special for our fall event. And then we will um provided everything aligns correctly, we'll do a big big celebration for Winterfest.
Keep her powder dry.
I know there's probably a lot of work into the planning, you know, and it was kind of disappointing not to have it, but man, with the heat, we can understand.
It was an agonizing decision. I mean, not not agonizing as in is it the right thing? It's just we knew it was going to affect the community, right? Um. But when it came down to it, we could not even imagine, you know, or inviting people to stand in a hundred and fifteen degree temperature, much less the bands. Uh, you know, the people singing, the vendors, and it just wasn't safe to encourage people to even come out at that temperature. So it it was a hard decision, but we were bouncing back a couple of days, but in the end, it just came that we have to protect the citizens and the staff and the guests.
I just wanted to say a a word of appreciation, all those that put a lot of effort into the planning and and um understand the disappointment of, you know, it not being able to happen. But anyway, thank you all.
And you know, there is a, just so everybody knows, there is a lot of planning to that goes into this. Uh, what a few days before, we even had a meeting that involved the schools, the fire, the police, you know, um it everybody had to come together, discuss logistics. Uh, and so it's a lot of work. Um. And it's sincerely is appreciated and it is a disappointment that in the end it didn't come, but I'm sure nobody wanted to work in that heat. Okay, any other items for good of the order? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, council member.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, council member Jerry.
Okay, great. Thank you. If there's no objections, then the meeting is adjourned at six fifty-three.